If I could have your attention, please. As the vice chairman of the commission, I'll call the joint meeting of the Washington County School Board and the Washington County Board of Commissioners to order. Our chairman Greg Maddel is not with us yet this evening. He's going to arrive a little bit late. He was leading a staff meeting this afternoon, but asked that we express his appreciation for everyone being here. Just welcome you, but immediately turn this over to the two people who've had a large part, if not the entire part, of putting this together. Our school board chairman Jason Day and Commissioner Jody Jones, chairman of our Hugh committee. Thank you all for your work on this and turn it over to you.
Okay. All right. Thank you all so much. I want to say a special thank you to Dr. Barnett, Ms. Hall from Johnson City and our state representatives, Ms. Alexander and Mr. Hicks. Thank you guys for coming and we're super excited to, we've been trying to do this for a while and get our commission and school board together. And I'm real excited about it and I hope it's one of many meetings together and I hope it's very productive and you guys enjoy all the hard work that Ms. Jones has put into this. And she's got a few things to say.
Welcome, everybody. I'm so glad that you all took the time to come tonight and I just want to also thank Mayor Grandy and Mr. Boyd, who spent lots of time with the two of us just coming up with a good format for tonight. This is a big topic and it's a complicated topic and we could have had different information tonight, we could have had different people here tonight. There's a lot of different ways to slice and dice workforce development. We chose the stuff we chose tonight after lots of conversations, but there's lots of room for more information and more conversations. So if you look at the back of your agenda, you'll see that I put some ideas on there and I put some room for you to give me ideas. And we'll feed that back to the school board, to the Johnson City group, to our group as a commission and Hugh, and see if we need to have some follow-up meetings to this one. This one is primarily informational, although we'll have an opportunity for Q and A at the end. And like I said, we gotta keep going. So let's think more about what the next conversation might be. Tonight we'll have several speakers. Each of them could probably speak for an hour. We're only giving them 15 minutes. So if you have a question that just to ask them to clarify something, that's fine, but we want you to hold your bigger questions for the end so we can get through the information and then have more of a Q and A at the end. We are recording this and so if there are folks that didn't get to make it tonight or if you want to go back and look later, it'll all be available to watch. And I would be remiss if I didn't conclude by thanking Jennifer Moore, Sherry Green, and Susan Saylor, who really did a lot of the behind-the-scenes work tonight to bring everything together. So thank you to all of them. I think that's all my preliminary comments. I am thrilled to make the first introduction, my colleague from ETSU, Dr. John Smith, who will be speaking to us on the economic side, economic development and workforce development from the business side. So glad to have you here tonight, sir.
I appreciate the opportunity to be here this evening and to talk a little bit about labor force and labor force participation and to give you some information on the trends in both labor force and employment as we go forward. I've got quite a few slides, but I'm going to move through them as quickly as possible. So if you have any questions, feel free to stop me. Nevertheless, we'll go ahead and get started. And once again, I know that you're here to talk about some of the ways of improving the attractiveness of our community and pumping up the labor force. So the first thing I want to do is just talk a little bit about some of the problems that you're going to face or some of the trends that are nationwide and local that are going to affect what we are able to do. First of all, let's talk about the labor force participation rate. Now, the participation rate is the percentage of the population, non-institutionalized population, that is, people who are institutionalized or in the military, having a background in the military, I think they're the same thing sometimes. But it's a percentage of people 16 and over that are in the population who are working or seeking employment. Now, the first thing you will notice, of course, is that the labor participation rate has been falling for quite some time. It peaked well before 2000, but has continued downward. You can also see that for Tennessee and to a lesser degree for the United States, in 2015, the labor force participation rate started to trend upward slightly, but it was a positive trend. Notice that for the nation, it was pretty much flat. Now you can also see the effect of the COVID virus. When that hit, people just exited the workforce. They weren't looking for jobs, there were no jobs. So there was a much lower percentage of the population that was actually working or looking for work. Then there came the rebound. Once things started to trend upward or the infection rate started to fall, people started to come back to work. Now you see another downfall, certainly in Tennessee. Now, there are a variety of reasons that you can speculate for this might be happening. For example, if you pay people not to work, they're not going to work. On the other hand, there are a lot of socioeconomic forces that may be forcing the labor participation rate down, including things like finding childcare for your children. That might keep a lot of females out of the workforce right now. The labor participation rate varies by a bunch of different factors: education, ethnicity, marital status, whether or not you have children. It is projected that it is going to be changing following the same trends over time. Now, the Bureau of Labor Statistics has provided information on the age groups that are the primary participants in the labor force. Remember that the civilian labor force is defined as starting at the age 16 and going forward. You can see that in particular, the 16 to 24 age group has a falling labor participation rate. Much of that is attributable to the desire of people in this age to go to college and to take job training. You can also see that the 55 and older participation rate has actually gone up. There's a reason for that, of course. First of all, people have the opportunity to work longer. And secondly, there are many people who find that their earnings thus far have not given them sufficient resources to retire, so they're staying in the market. The primary group for employment, the base, the core of your employment, is the 25 to 54 age group. Now, the civilian labor force, different from the participation rate, is the actual number of people who are either employed or unemployed and seeking work. I've shown here, and notice there are two axes, the civilian labor force growth for some of our regional MSAs, Asheville, Kingsport, Bristol, and Johnson City, as compared to that for the state of Tennessee. The important thing to look at is whether or not your civilian labor force growth is increasing, stable, flat, or decreasing. You will notice that Tennessee, the state of Tennessee in particular, has been quite fortunate in that our total labor force for the state is going up. It's a nice positive trend. We did take a hit with COVID, everybody did. You will also notice that the Asheville MSA pretty much parallels that kind of gain, steadily increasing labor force. You will now see that Johnson City and Kingsport have been stable or falling since about 2010. So in terms of the dynamics of the labor force, our region has kind of been left out of some of the more explosive regions. Knoxville, for example, it also has a really nice increase. The share of the labor force by age is also going to change over time. These are predictions, once again, from the Bureau of Labor Statistics, and there's a URL if you want to look at it. You will notice that for the 16 to 24 age group, by 2019, there is a remarkable decrease in the percentage of labor force made up by that group. Part of that's just due to dynamics. The birth rate is at a record low now and there are just not that many people coming in. You will also notice that the groups that I mentioned from 25 to 54 make up over 70% of the workforce. That's going to remain pretty much stable as you move forward to 2019, at least the forecast. But you will also notice that the workforce is going to have a greater and greater proportion of people 55 and older. 55 is not, today is not the 55 it was 40 years ago. Looking at that, now remember that we saw that from 25 to 44, or actually 54, is really the big, the core of your labor force. Here you see the age distribution by percent, by geography, that is, for Tennessee, the U.S., and for our sister MSAs. You will notice that our MSA, the Johnson City MSA, is pretty much higher than, you know, small percentages are very significant here, much higher in the very young group than it is in the other groups, other than the older group. If you start to look at that core of your population that makes up your vibrant labor force, you will notice that we're significantly lower than the state and the country. And as we move forward from the 35 to 44, you'll see that the differential becomes increased. It's only when we get to the very older group, and this is our current population, that we start to increase. And as we age out, you see that we are significantly older than the state and the nation. We're fairly different from our sister MSAs, too, and you can see that Asheville is pretty much close to us, but Asheville is a very vibrant retirement community. That's why a lot of the older people are moving in. So when we start talking about where's our labor force today, that's where it is. The question may arise, why is the percentage so high in the 15 to 24 age group? The answer is the university. We get a lot of younger people staying here for that age group. What happens after that? They migrate out. They look for better employment opportunities. The real question, I think, that is important for you tonight is what's the employment situation going to look like in the future? Where are the jobs going to be? What should we do in order to try and make this community ready for 2029? You will see that this is where we are today. Now typically, what we do when we start to look at the employment situation in a community, we group it by sector, similar businesses, and we call them, the feds call it the super sectors, and they're basically things like arts and entertainment, hospitality, retail, wholesale, manufacturing, and so forth. These are the 13 largest sectors that are in our community now, and this is where we are today. Now, it's important to notice that for our community, we exceed the state and the nation in things like art, entertainment, and hospitality, but more importantly, in education and healthcare, this is something to pay particular attention to. Likewise, Johnson City is ahead of our, most of our brethren, our regional cohorts, and this state and the nation in terms of manufacturing. But this is non-durable manufacturing, and it actually makes up a relatively small proportion of our total workforce. You can see about 14%. And we go on and you can see that we're also big in retail trade. Question is now, how are we positioned with respect to what's going to be happening with the employment in the future? You hear a lot about STEM employment. I just want to make one minor comment there. STEM employment occupations, engineering, science, and math, and things of that nature, are extraordinarily important for regional development. All of the theory says that this is where a lot of your R and D comes from, this is where a lot of your investment comes from. The thing to think, to remember, though, is that STEM employment, and we hear a lot of talk about it, accounts for less than 10% of our total employment. So we need to focus on that other part of the employment picture as well. Now, this is the projected annual rate of change in sectoral employment. And you can see that healthcare and social assistance, which is where we are strong, is projected to have a very strong increase in the jobs that are available by 2029. Mining is also fairly high here. Let me point out, though, that the number of the people employed in mining now is very small. So the percentage increase looks good, but it's not that many jobs. If you go down here, you can see in the major categories, leisure and hospitality are expected to pick up after COVID, of course, and transportation and warehousing. But if you look down at some of the things that we are strong in right now, like retail trade, manufacturing, those are anticipated to have decreases in future employment. When we get to projecting percentage changes by specific occupational groups, once again, you'll see that the healthcare support occupations are going to have most of the growth for the economy in the future. The reason for that, of course, is, one, we're getting more sophisticated in what we do; two, the population is getting older; three, I've got one minute. So, so much fun. Anyway, here are the six fastest, six of the 10 fastest-growing occupations, and you will notice they are chained to healthcare. So remember, this is an advantage for us right now. I also have in your packet something you may want to look at. I have some data here from the Bureau of Labor Statistics, and this will give you some information on, one, just basic national employment growth in the future and where it's going to change, and it's also the median annual wages, so you can see where the money is. Two, these are the fastest-growing occupations. You'll have an opportunity to peruse those. You'll notice some of them are really rather exotic, like wind turbine science technicians and so forth, solar photovoltaic installers. You can also see the associated incomes. These are the fastest declining, so as you start to consider where you should put your resources, you have the fastest growing, you have the fastest declining. I also note that one of the things you're interested in, of course, is occupations that do not require advanced degrees or associate's degrees. So what I've done is I've pulled out the, it cuts, cut off here, the top 20 highest-paying jobs that do not require an associate's degree or higher, that only require a high school diploma or the equivalent. You'll also see the work experience required and how much OJT. So that can be an input in the way that you do it. And STOP, I will, this is the last, the last thing, the last pages of your packet are also extracted from the Bureau of Labor Statistics, and there are 300 job categories that do not require associate's degrees or above, and it'll give you a feel for where the growth is expected for this particular group. I am so sorry that I went over, and Jody's going to kill my dog now. Do you have any questions? Ask Jody. Thank you so much, it's a pleasure.
Thank you so much, Dr. Smith. That was really great, and the packet is really helpful, too. Our next speaker is Mr. Mitch Miller from the Northeast Tennessee Regional Economic Partnership. I put all the words together in the proper order this time, it's pretty good. Are you clicking?
I am, just speaking.
You're speaking, that's great.
Yep. So I apologize, you know, going after Dr. Smith, who hands out 37 pages, I only have one page, and it's right in the middle of your table. But, you know, that page is really important, it's front and back, so it's actually two pages. I wanted to hand that out and really start the conversation looking at that because that's the voice of our manufacturers. Those are positions that ultimately they're having a very difficult time trying to find employees for right now. These two surveys, they came, the front page you see came most recently in January of 2021, and the one on the backside came from November of 2020. Probably the real difference that you see in those, the November survey really focused more on some higher-skill positions that manufacturers are having a hard time filling those jobs with. Obviously, you can attribute a lot of the entry-level problems that you see on January 2021, like packaging, production workers, janitors, things like that, focused more on the fact that, you know, benefits are being provided, and ultimately, those positions, most likely, are going to be those folks who'll be staying at home, collecting unemployment versus coming to work and actually working. So with that change and the governor's announcement, I will say this, though, it's still not going to solve the problems. It may be a short-term fix, but it's no different than what we saw before COVID, that manufacturers were having a very difficult time trying to fill jobs and find employees. I think it's just part of where we are currently today. So some of the things that we've been focusing on, trying to at least help them to create a pipeline, and you're going to hear me say that word a lot, because it's extremely important to have that talent pipeline in place, whether we're recruiting company here or helping an existing company expand, or just make sure that they're considering Washington County as their destination when they do an expansion, especially when they have operations like an A.O. Smith in Ashland City right outside of Nashville. We want to make sure that, one, they're connected with state programs. In particular, back in January, we had a Zoom for our manufacturers, and we typically get anywhere between 30 to 40 manufacturers be part of those Zooms. We had Tyra Kopas with Apprenticeship Tennessee, she's the director there, really talking about trying to create that pipeline and work through that program, finding apprenticeships in people that can actually fill those roles, working with them. Lottie Ryan's has been amazing with the work that she's doing at the Development District and has been very engaged with our manufacturers on these Zoom calls as well. And I don't want to take anything away because I know Lottie's speaking tonight, too, but making sure that we're connected in, you know, with our high schools or middle schools, but more importantly, understanding the needs of manufacturers. And then lastly, we make sure that we've got great relationships with Northeast State, the Regional Center for Advanced Manufacturing. We're trying to do everything we can to make sure that that pipeline is created, it's there, and it's stable. One of the things that's really important, though, in our business of economic development, and the county commission knows this, we're recently, we're trying to recruit an international company to the Washington County Industrial Park. And, yeah, we have a building, and that's great, and, you know, we have flatland out there, and that's great, but really, what we're starting to understand more and more, people are the new currency in our profession. Companies are not going to come to a community that do not have a pipeline of individuals that can fill jobs. And we've got to make that our biggest priority, and it starts, honestly, it probably starts just as kids are getting ready to go into middle school, thinking about the professions that they can go into and making sure that we're prepared to get those individuals in the right place. You can rely on mentors, but some kids don't have mentors. I think it's up to us to make sure that we're actually positioning them for success. And if we want this community to be successful, we've got to do a better job there, and that starts with us, too. I do think there's some opportunity here as we look at potentially a TCAT here in Washington County and what that can mean. Dr. Smith really touched on some great data. Couple of things that I would point out as we talk about educational attainment, I think this is extremely important and something that we look at, and quite honestly, this could be a regional goal that we focus on beyond just Washington County. When you compare our region to the national average of 25 years old or older with an associate's degree, we're sitting at about 30.7%. The national average is about 45.16%, we're behind. So that pipeline, we've got a lot of ground to make up. I think it can start right here in just the conversation that we have about where we want to be as a community. I think the manufacturers would totally become, go, come behind you all and support whatever you decide to do with a TCAT or making sure that, working with our educational institutions that, you know, every kid can have an opportunity to get a CTE certificate by the time they graduate, just to have that opportunity. We're hearing more and more the need of people, and I can guarantee you that our manufacturers want to be part of the solution so they don't continue to have the same problems. Lastly, I just touched base on a few things, what we're hearing from a labor standpoint with workforce shortages, obviously unemployment benefits, key issue, now with that changing here in the state of Tennessee, you will see some of those folks go back to work. Fear of COVID in the workplace does still exist. Dr. Smith talked about childcare issues, that is still a major problem, where women are actually choosing not to return to the workplace for those issues. And then again, workers holding off for higher wages. I want to touch on the higher wage piece, too. Dr. Smith talked about manufacturing and those numbers declining a little bit. Some of that is going to be attributed, at least in my mind, and you're going to see manufacturers focus more on automation. It's just the nature of the beast, what they've got to do. There won't be enough people that can actually come in and work a production line to carry out a process. So millions and millions of dollars will be invested in automation, but it's also going to require someone with greater and higher skills to do that job, to make sure those robots don't break down. So as you think about things that ultimately are important to the future of this community, I do think that if we can focus on that together and really look at ways that we can create that pipeline for future success, we're all going to be better for it, so. I'm sorry I don't have 100 slides, but that's the best I've got in about five to 10 minutes. And John, you probably could have kept speaking for me and made it so much better, you know. Jody, go ahead.
Can you repeat the statistic you were saying, where you were saying that locally we're at 30% and the state is at 45%? What was that?
No, educational attainment, and you're looking at individuals that are 25 years or older with an associate's degree or higher. Our region as a whole, when I say our region, I'm talking about Johnson City, Kingsport, Bristol, CSA, which encompasses then, you know, even parts of southwest Virginia. We're sitting at 30.7% in educational attainment with individuals that have an associate's degree or higher that are over the age of 25. The national average as a whole is 45.16. You know, to me, that's a staggering number. That's something that ultimately is, and I share enough conversations with Joe about regionalism, as we talk about things that are important and why we need to focus on initiatives together, it's numbers like that. It's really looking at statistics that are holding us back, that any consultant, any employer are going to look at and find out before they ever take a look and see if Washington County is the place they want to be.
Hey Mitch, how would you make the communication between the folks at SLOV and the folks at U.S.?
You know, it depends on, it depends on the company. You know, some companies have great relationships with Northeast State, some companies have great relationships with TCAT. It just depends on what they're looking for ultimately, and that might be better suited for Lottie because she is, she's in it every day. But it really just depends on the type of positions they're looking for, if they're getting quality training and already have training programs set up with whatever institution it may be. And I think that has to be a priority. Every company that we've had, from EBM PAPs to this new company we're recruiting in, labor, workforce, key priorities, they want to know not only Lottie, but they want to know the individuals at Northeast State, at TCAT, and they want to know everything that you're going to do for them. You know, it's just, again, it goes back to the currency side, Phil, and I think you're only going to see those needs, you know, get greater.
Mitch?
Hey Mitch, and this might be for John, too. What, because I didn't see it.
What, because I didn't see it in any of John's slides, but agriculture is a huge industry in the state of Tennessee, but it's not really, it doesn't really show up in this big and workforce, I guess, because, you know, how you're gonna treat them. What's, what's the TLE telling you about agriculture in Northeast Tennessee?
John, you know, you know, Mitch, that's, that's not our wheelhouse. We're not really dealing in, dealing in ag business at all. We're, we're primarily looking at the manufacturing side, and from a call center perspective, this customer service side is really what we're.
I mean, that encompasses, not only the critical life, that encompasses a lot, you know, if you're, you know, equipment manufacturers, you know, Bush Hall would be, I'm sure, part of agricultural environment, so, just trying to get a feel for where we need to be going in terms of ag.
Well, if you look at, they count people who are actually on the ground involved in agriculture, hurting, unfortunately. They do not include the, the supply chain that goes into supplying agriculture. But one thing we do know is small parts are disappearing. They're disappearing because of these swarms of, much larger groups that have huge quantities escaped and instead requiring ten guys to, 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 you mean, one guy with a huge amount of money, and maybe he can give the work for two people. So if you look at government forecast, agriculture, forestry, farming is decreasing in terms of anticipated number of workers.
Do you have any percentage of part-time farmers that have a regular job, like you can farm on the side or raise cattle on the side?
The interview, Joe, I think, based on the way they put the statistics, do you have, yes, I work part-time, I work, okay, thank you. Nobody says, do you have an army? Now, there are, it is, it's due to count the number of people who are employed at home, or that's the, per population. I need to look at that and see if they break it down, see if they break it down.
Your agriculture uses migrant workers. That's where you're, they're still using the same amount of people all day long. They've got migrant workers because you can get high school kids or anything like that to get out and work in the hay fields or the hay patches, cornfields or whatever. That's where the, that's where the agriculture workers is, is there, and it's migrant.
Well, in fact.
I used to, I used.
Yeah, I've, I've talked to some people and other people who also, everybody's doing that work. And what you say is echoed by everybody I've talked to.
I mean, you know, I'm selling milk cheaper today than milk was selling in the seventies, but I'm paying $10 more on the hour for labor, so what's wrong with that?
Well, that's one of the reasons that agriculture has decreased.
That's right.
Because you either have, have a huge mechanical.
Well, I mean, I, I'm kinda gonna disagree with you. I'm still doing it, and I've done it since, you know, when I graduated high school in 1984, David Crockett High School, there's 155 dairy farms in Washington County. Today, they're set. That's a big problem. But they're money, you can't make no money.
Is it only gonna get worse if you're placed in the middle of the way?
Thank you, Mitch.
Thank you, Jody.
All right. Our next speaker is Crystal Fake, who will be filling us in as Director of CTE, Washington County Schools. Bring it on.
I know that cut into my time a little, but I figure a picture is worth a thousand words. And that is just a glimpse of some of the things that Washington County CTE is doing. Thank you for inviting me out tonight. I'm always excited to talk about Washington County and what we are doing in our career tech programs. I'm gonna try to go really fast and save some room at the end for questions, so I'm gonna throw a lot of information at you, but I promise I won't quiz you at the end. So when we talk about career tech education, we know there's been a lot of research that's went out. Students with greater exposure to career technical education are more likely to graduate from high school, enroll in college, be employed, and earn higher wages. Things that we do in high school, where we try to get our kids college or career-ready and/or career-ready, we look at all the skills that go into helping a student be successful, industry credentials, post-secondary credentials and degrees, and of course, we try to partner with our business and industry. Career technical is also important for post-secondary. We have community and technical colleges for a fraction of, of the cost. We already mentioned about all those careers that require an associate's degree. And one study that I read said individuals with associate's degrees in CTE fields can earn an average of $10,000 more than those with associate degrees in other fields. CTE also works for businesses. So we address the needs of industry, and we wanna fill those skills gap, and, you know, that's what our meeting is about tonight. Also, another study I read said more than half of the nation's fastest-growing occupations require education below a bachelor's degree. Some of the things that we do in career tech, not only with the skills, but we have a vast variety of aspects, and we look at the industrial framework. A lot of soft skills go into our programs. I have employers that I talk to weekly that say, man, we just, can a kid, you know, answer the phone correctly? Can they show up to work on time? Can they stay off their cell phone for a minute? And those are things that we do in our career tech programs. As you well know, Tennessee is categorized in 16 different categories for career clusters. I'm proud to say that Washington County offers 12 of those. So we're real excited about what we do again in our county. Programs of study, when you think about career clusters, career clusters are the big umbrellas, and then we have those programs of study that's underneath each career cluster, and it really looks at those occupations in the career field, okay? So that's kind of the difference between career cluster and program of study. We offer 18 programs of study with, we are adding two more next year and hopefully continue to add more as the years go on. We also work in work-based learning. If you've heard the term work-based learning, it's basically an opportunity for students to explore careers while they're receiving high school credit. This can be paid or unpaid, and there's different opportunities here with apprenticeships, co-op, health science clinicals. We also work with our students that are in our special education to go out and do service learning with different business and industry. I just, for this slide, I wanna point out the Tennessee Department of Education wants to double our enrollment in the state by increasing work-based learning opportunities. And we need business and industry to help us do that. A lot of times, people think, oh, my goodness, I don't want a high school punk coming into my, my industry, but we, we send you cream of the crop, kids, I promise, when we, when we're talking about business and industry. Some of the internships that we done, I hope Lottie focuses on that in her speech, but really good opportunity for our students. We also have career technical student organizations. If you were in high school years ago, these probably were still around. Tennessee has seven that we recognize, and these, again, solidify, we want a well-rounded student. We want them to have leadership skills, citizenship responsibilities, and they can get that through their career tech organization. These are the Tennessee Promoted Industry Credentials. I have to get used to saying that. It used to be industry certifications, but now it's credentials. These are the ones offered in Washington County, and I highlighted the blue ones. These are actually industry credentials that the student can graduate high school and get a job. They don't need anything else, and most of these are saturated in healthcare, as was pointed out, healthcare's a big industry. This one, of course, is for automotive. We have a great automotive program at one of our schools. And then pharmacy tech, we're gonna start next year in Washington County, and our welding for next year, the certification. We've had welding for a while, but an actual certification. How do we do what we do? Why, why do we do what we do? Well, we have huge accountability measures to the state. We have advisory councils. We meet twice a year with business and industry, parents, students, workforce development. All those advisory councils dictate and recommend what equipment do we need, what kind of things do you need in industry, because that's what we do, is provide what our industry needs. We also look at our regional labor market data all the time, daily. I'm looking at our labor market data. And of course, we wanna provide equal access for all students, regardless of where, where they are in life. We are also a part of becoming, or part of the work-ready community, emerging, that's high school, and we have a check mark. I'm proud of that, as we help to have our county for work-ready status. These are some WorkKeys results. If you notice, with COVID, we took a really hard hit in our numbers, but really still proud of our, what we do. Workkeys is now accepted at Northeast State. TCAT's looking at accepting Workkeys as one of a, a college credit. And we have now 70 employers in Washington County that either recognize or recommend the NCRC, which is a certificate that comes from taking the Workkeys exam. So what are we looking forward to? I'm always looking forward to increasing, again, our work-based learning offerings, our industry credentials, our summer internships. We have three businesses in our area. We're working with ETSU, giving our kids free Adobe certifications. We just completed our first EMT basic program, the only one in the state, and these students receive 15 semester hours of college credit. They actually receive a cap and gown from Northeast State and can walk across the stage at Northeast State being a high school student. We're gonna keep doing Career Quest with First Tennessee Development District, all of our career-related field trips, working on recruitment, partnering with our post-secondary, and some exciting news, we're working on a pre-LPN program with TCAT. It's really hard because TCAT does clock hours, we're semester hours, but we're working all that out with the Board of Nursing and hopefully get our students at least halfway on their way to become a LPN when they graduate high school. I won't ever get up here and not talk about our wonderful teachers. If it wasn't for our teachers, none of this would happen. Any questions so far? All right, moving along. So what do we need? Washington County, we offer, 90% of our high school students are involved in at least one course in career technical courses. Now, I'm gonna talk about concentrators here in a second, but again, 90%, that's a really high number in Washington County, of our students that at least have some exposure to career tech. These are, this is some data. We have Daniel Boone, David Crockett, and University High. 40% of our students concentrate in CTE at Daniel Boone with a state average of 39. Concentrate means that those students take at least two courses in sequential order in a single program of study. I know that's a mouthful, but that's what that means. Early post-secondary, it means they go on to college. You can see those numbers. For Daniel Boone, 1% of our students go to TCAT after graduation, 35% at community college, Northeast State, Walter State, things like that, and then 6% of four-year university. I'm always asked why this number's so low. It's because TCAT has really high waitlist in our TCAT Elizabethan. Looking at David Crockett's data, we're a little below state average for concentrators. One of the reasons is because we've had, remember I said it had to be in sequential order? We've had some course scheduling issues. We're gonna get those numbers up, though, next year. And a 24% early post-secondary, and you can see the numbers there in the statistics for that. University High, just, they're included in our data, and notice that they do not offer any career tech courses. All right, what are my goals? Well, again, to increase our number of CTE concentrators. I mentioned already, course sequencing is very important. We're working with our counselors, some scheduling conflicts to meet that goal. We wanna increase our number of post-secondary placement. Our challenge is those economically disadvantaged students and generational gaps. It's very difficult. David Crockett is considered a title school because over half of their population is free and reduced lunch. There's also that generational gap where you talk to parents and you're like, man, it's important for your student to go to post-secondary, and they say, well, I've worked in industry and I've paid the bills all my life. Why does my kid need to go to college? So that's a very hard thing to try to change the mindset of our, our families moving forward. We also wanna increase the number of programs of study to meet the needs of our region. Some of our challenges is our existing facilities. Both high schools have a shortage of classroom space. One high school, they have an average of four teachers a year that have to float, meaning they move from one classroom to the other depending on planning periods. And the other one, we have three teachers that share the same classroom. So we do have some challenges there. We wanna increase career awareness and exploration in K through 12. Funding can be a challenge, finding those dedicated career counselors, finding the curriculum. I have purchased a curriculum for next year. We wanna be more methodical of getting these students into the program of study before they get into high school. We started it in middle school this year. It had great reviews. We, we wanna do a better job in that in Washington County. And increase the middle school offerings. Again, classroom space and teacher recruitment can be a challenge. My last slide, and I don't know if many know this, but we do have a challenge with teacher recruitment, and here's why. Now, I came from healthcare. That was my background. I'm a respiratory therapist by trade. I worked in the industry for 17 years. And when I came to be an educator, I was in the classroom for 10 years, I had a passion for teenagers. I was working at my church as a youth minister, and I had just a passion for teenagers, so that's why I left. But people leave their industry to come and teach. Not only did I leave my industry and take a cut in pay, because I'd been there for 17 years, I had to go and take, back then, it was 18 semester hours, now they've decreased it to 12, out of the teacher's pocket. So I had to pay money out of my pocket to go back to school. I'm still a respiratory therapist. I have to maintain my respiratory degree. I'm licensed in the state of Tennessee. If anything goes bad in education, I can go back to work in healthcare. And there's other things that they have to do. So we have trouble asking people, leave your job, leave your pay, and come back. So, all right, man, I did good. Any questions? We got five minutes.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
On a scale of one to 10, as far as your facilities and you're equipped to teach CTE local program, what would you say you're at?
It really depends on the program of study. By nature, some programs of study are gonna cost more money. A lathe and a meal costs a lot more than a pulse ox for healthcare. We have been very blessed. Our school board has been wonderful to me and our programs, but we could always do more. We have some really old facilities. We're talking back in the 70s. You know, outlets and things like that, you, you think wouldn't be a problem. But again, it really depends on the program of study. It's hard for me to dictate overall. But again, it really depends on the program of study. It's hard for me to dictate overall. We did purchase a lot of new equipment this year. We received some grants. I'm constantly looking for donations from jobs, but I feel like we're pretty solid. But again, I always want to increase. Does that answer your question?
No.
I'm sorry.
You make a good politician. I just want to figure, you know, on a scale of one to 10, what do you think, what do you want to think of Washington County's school systems, you know, their location departments, how they're equipped, what do you think?
Again, it depends on the program of study. Our health science programs, probably a 10. Advanced manufacturing, probably a 10. Electrical, seven, but we have some programs of study. Our welding, the facility is so old, we have the equipment, but the facility's very old, so probably a four. I mean, you can't give an overall for just Washington County, because it really does depend on the program study. I hope, I know that's not what you wanted to hear, but any other questions? All right, thank you.
Thank you so much, Crystal. That was great. And next we have our local workforce guru, Lottie Ryans from First Tennessee Development District.
Yes. Just a second, I'll get Crystal her book back.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay. Thank you for including me tonight. I'm going to really focus on particular solutions, but there's probably many other things we can talk about. And thank you for your support of the National Career Readiness Certificate that Crystal mentioned. The Washington County Commission has been very supportive to make sure that students in Washington County schools, which includes Johnson City Schools, have access to that testing at no charge. So thank One of my mottos is you can't be what you can't see. So I really work hard to make sure we do a lot of career exploration, that we have an opportunity to bring our students in front of business and industry so they really understand what careers might look like. When we first started our Career Quest events, I remember, and it was not Washington County, but two different school systems, one person said, you know, some of our kids don't know anything other than what mom and daddy do. And if they live in a rural area and what mom and daddy do doesn't make a lot of money, or whatever, that's all they know they can do. More sadly, I've had counselors say, and we've got kids who see nobody go to work. So that's some of the cultural issues that Crystal was talking about that we are fighting, but we try to make sure that we look at things from a regional perspective. So some of the things I'm going to talk about very quickly, that we've had a lot of discussions with a lot of different people. We've had, put in some different grant applications, really trying to look at what we can become in this region with a satellite TCAT, a dual enrollment site. We have talked with various high schools around the region, various systems of what that might look like, business and industry partnerships to get there, post-secondary partnerships, and in the pipeline as the TCATs have talked at the state level, potential funding for any renovations that might need to happen. The Workforce Board, which is part of the state workforce system, lists on their website these top 10 sectors. So as we thought about what might a regional facility look like, a couple of these stood out. We have a lot going on at advanced manufacturing. I know that's where a lot of the conversation has been tonight, but if you think about regionally, there are programs in place. So if we think about areas that really do need more focus, construction is one of those, accommodation and food service, and then we'll talk about one more that came up in recent conversations as we go through this. I think it's important for you to recognize, we talk about our region as a region, their commuter patterns, we pulled some of this data out. So if you look down to the left, folks in Washington County, over 1,000 go to Carter County to work, 1,900 go to Green County to work, for example, 8,500 go to Sullivan County. Likewise, it can flip it. Sullivan County ends, 7,500 come to Washington County to work. So we do move around in our region. So it's important that we look, can look at things that not only will help us in Washington County, but can help us throughout the region. A couple of things that your high schools have been very involved in, our Career Quest events and our E2E. E2E is our Education to Employment Summit. We hope to be able to bring that back, and that's where we bring government, business and industry, K-12, post-secondary together to say, what are some of our common issues? What are things we need to be working on? What are the gaps? And we talk about some best practices. So the last time we were able to do one of those in person, we talked about some of the leadership development that's being done in some school systems even as early as elementary school, because we start thinking about the gaps and the things, the soft skills that our employers continuously tell us are problematic. MC is another data system. We get a lot of data through Mitch's organization, much like the BLS that Dr. Smith talked about. So if we look at construction, an area of focus for us, the far right-hand side shows you what some of the median, the annual median, median annual wages for our region, so our eight-county region as an example. Heavy Equipment Operator, $35,000, HVAC, $36,000. But if you talk to our employers in construction, they're going to tell you with all the hours they can put in, they've got some people making six figures very easily. So a high-need area for our region, construction internship. So this summer will be our second opportunity to actually have three general contractors, Acorn Electric, Norwell, and Burleson, who have students who are actually working side by side with tradesmen for the summer. Crystal mentioned generational issues. One of the things we've done, we bring these programs forward, is we ask the teachers to pick the students that are going to be successful, and we have parent meetings with the students together so that they understand the expectations. You don't bring yourself on to work. You're going to have to go through a drug test. You may work long hours, but there's a lot of reward and a lot of potential from it. We think that's been one of our keys to success, because the parents understand going in, here's the opportunity my student has. I picked these two pictures from our E2E summit. These were some Washington County students. Tell you a quick story. So one of the students, his dad did not want him to apply for the program. He didn't understand why he was applying. He had a job at Ingalls. I was trying to figure out, why would you say that? And here was my, here's where I concluded, that, well, his Ingalls job is going to be there when school started back, right? So all his dad knew was you're walking away from a job that's got you hours, and it's not just a summer job. At the end of it, and this student shared the story at E2E, he was able to stay on with Burleson, and he started going to, I think it was Northeast State, and his dad was very proud of him. So really a change of heart and a change of life direction for that student. Here is a support letter as we were looking at different possibilities for grants. Over the past two years, we worked with the Development District, as they speak to this. There's no better way to build our future workforce than to start at a young age. Therefore, we fully support our program of work-based learning, internships, and ultimately the hiring of graduates. The construction industry currently has an average worker age in the 50s, and it's becoming nearly impossible to find any trained young candidates to take the place of the skilled workers. This is why having those opportunities for students to really learn and work with our business and industry is so important. Another area that we focused on is culinary. So again, I'm thinking about the building is driving some of the conversation. Our culinary, this is an example, we utilize the culinary programs for our seven high schools that have extraordinary programs. We use them to help us with our programs like our Career Quest VIP event, our E2E. We've had people that were in industry representing corporations not from here who were like, I really thought that was catered by culinary people that do that professionally. They were so impressed, but it stops. There is no place within 45 minutes, they have to go to Sevierville if they want to continue in culinary, or go really far away, you know, Charlotte, New York, spend lots of money to continue that. So culinary is a program we've been talking about. How can we do something with that regionally? MC data on that, chefs make over $40,000. You look at companies like Chick-fil-A, you look at companies like Pals. I mean, sometimes people might think, well, you know, are they just going to be working out front in a McDonald's or whatever? No, they have fine careers and really upward mobility. Metta View Conference Center is another area that we've worked with and talked to about how they would embrace the students. Chick-fil-A support letter. Some of you may know Tim Birchfield. He was really strongly supporting doing something with culinary at the TCAT satellite, filling the reuse of the building and if any equipment from the cafeteria is a good use of existing resources. He'd be honored to provide work-based learning and internships at his franchise to help prepare the students for marketplace selections. Northeast Tennessee Tourism Association, their support for us trying to do something in hospitality. The Northeast Tennessee Region pre-COVID generated an economic impact of over $911 million annually. We've got to get back to that level. You think about some of the conventions and conventions that are brought here. You think about new facilities, for example, in Bristol as they bring in Hard Rock. So having people that can move into these higher-paying jobs in that area. If you think about construction, if you think about culinary, for me, those are foundational. If you can't build the houses, if you can't build the facilities, then all the recruitment in the world that Mitch does, he's going to be hurting. If you think about hospitality and tourism, when people come visit our area, that is the face of our region. So two support letters as it relates to CTE. What we don't want to do is cannibalize. The great programs are gone in place, but as you can see here from one of the teachers at Crockett, culinary is 45 minutes away. Unfortunately, not an option for many students, so their dream may stop here. Post-secondary option offered by TCAT would be the perfect next step for our students. From Science Hills, CTE's support letter from their culinary program, one of the largest, most recruited programs at our schools, and I think all of our schools would tell you that, establishing a regional campus allows for students to continue their education and enhance their skills. And then from our chamber, recruiters and hiring managers look for candidates who can jump right in. We face numerous challenges that stretch across state boundaries, but having strong programs in place is something that they really support that we try to do for our region. So why do I say all this? I believe you have an opportunity to really think through where we go from here. There are pivotal moments in our history, especially as those of you who are in service to our community as elected officials. I realize you want to make the best decision for Washington County, and that includes Johnson City. I realize you want to make the best decision for students and for taxpayers. Employers are interested and willing to work with schools, but in the most effective and efficient way. TCAT and other post-secondary providers are willing to work with schools, but at the same time, they have accountability requirements, the numbers for enrollment and graduates and placements in jobs. One school system can't manage that. One school system can't drive that kind of result. In a conversation with multiple partners, one college president said, the reality of these programs, they do require multiple school systems participating to be successful. You have a wonderful asset in the Old Boones Creek Elementary. It's centrally located and with a structure to begin programming now. I think you have an opportunity to do a dual enrollment high school there, where multiple, we've had conversations again with multiple systems. One idea was to have the different school systems participating. For example, let's say Johnson City provided an English teacher, and Washington County provided a math teacher, and Kingsport provided the science teacher, so that students, the transportation issue of getting them back and forth wouldn't be there. But we've got businesses willing to help give very expensive equipment and really help drive getting business and industry partnerships. But they don't want to do it with 14 high schools. They want an opportunity to look at how we can do that consolidated. A wonderful jewel of an opportunity for Washington County that you all have the opportunity to make a great decision about. So I respect the desire, that you want to make sure you're making the right decision about that asset, but I do strongly encourage that we move forward in looking at this to be a satellite TCAT and a regional dual enrollment center. Thank you.
Okay, our last speaker tonight is Mr. Boyd, our new school superintendent, and we're excited to hear his words. We asked him to, you know, bring some of his own knowledge and thoughts about technical education, but also reflect on the words he'd heard tonight from our various speakers. So we'll give him some time to talk, and then we'll have some time for question and answer with everyone. So, thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. I would also, you know, like to call out Dr. Barnett, who's here from Johnson City. You know, we all, my primary focus, of course, are students that we serve in Washington County schools, but as a total, you know, Washington County, you know, we serve all Washington County students. So this conversation is certainly from my perspective about our students in Washington County schools, but it's about all of Washington County students, and it's also regionally about the impact that we need to have on today and in the future, and about, you know, labor, the workforce. And I'd like to shift it a little bit on workforce development. I think we need to look at, and what I see across the nation is, at least as large industries start talking about the labor force needs, you know, it's really about talent development, and what we do in K-12 or pre-K-12 education focuses on one of the, that, one of the groups, age groups that Dr. Smith called out earlier, 16 to 24. That's really where we can connect and make, and make a huge impact, and looking at things like that I've heard tonight, you know, awareness, career awareness, career exploration. And then what I also like to prefer, or prefer to talk, to talk about our CTE programs in high schools is connections. We're connecting high school kids to those next opportunities, post-secondary, or, you know, or straight into the workforce. So what we have to focus on in K-12 education is really, we have to be attentive to the regional employers to meet our, what we want to do is not just make kids, quote, "college and career-ready." Ultimately, we want all students to be career-ready, no matter what path they take. So our conversations are really about pipeline or the pathway that we provide them. And when we think about that, we need to think about, in that path, in that highway, as they're going towards a career, we need to make sure they know what direction they're going, you know, what, all these industries, especially in the region, that are, make sure our students know what's available and where the needs are now and in the future, so that when they're on that pathway, they may get off an exit and may not, they may not be, for example, in a healthcare situation, they may not be a physician, but they will be part of that career as a medical technician. But we need them to understand too, that that highway continues on. If they want to get back on that highway, that pathway, and go towards being that physician, they need to know that that's a lifelong endeavor. But while they're there, they're accessing the careers that are available to them in a focused area. So in K-12, we need to provide our young people that frame, that view, and those opportunities to connect to, you know, to the workforce in their region. So for example, what we know we're going to, we're going to focus on, and it's a, it's a common focus across not just Tennessee, but the nation, is we know we need to expose and provide young, you know, our young students access to just what's out there career-wise. So we need to really strengthen our focus on awareness. You know, even our elementary students can be exposed to careers. We want to keep a regional lens, you know, as our primary focus, so we need to be informed by the employers in the region, and what, and so as we build this awareness, we work from the feedback and input from our industry and business partners, and we make sure that our young people start getting exposure through career awareness. And then when they move into, say, the middle school grades, you know, it's a progression. So we need, then they need to begin to think about exploration, what's involved with certain careers, doing some, you know, digging in and identifying what skills are needed, what aptitude is needed, you know, the interest of the students and how they can connect to the regional jobs, that we've been informed, you know, the information we received from our employers of the region, and all the partners that work with the employers to have this information out there. And then finally, as students are getting ready to enter high school, we should have a very strong career planning process to help them understand, whatever path they take as they go through high school, whether they go on to college, university, four-year, two-year, or to a TCAT for specific training, or straight into the workforce, they need to have a specific plan of action. So we need to, we need to bolster our career planning at the early stages so that when they get into the high school and they start what I said earlier about connecting to their future career, you know, they need to have a plan. You know, too often, both in my generation and previous and in current, we have students that meet the requirements of high school graduation, and they leave our high schools successful by what they've been asked to do, but then they don't have a plan after that. So a high number of our kids, because of their parents or their, or their family, they go on to college, and a high number of those students drop out, and then we lose them. Then they enter into low-wage, low-skill jobs. We want to focus our kids and expose them, awareness, exploration, connecting to high skill, high wage, high connecting to high-skill, high-wage, high-demand jobs in the region. And so that's where the partnership has to happen between us in pre-K-12, our post-secondary institutions serving the region, and then our, all of the agencies that are focused on economic and workforce development. And then finally, as I mentioned several times already, we have to be responsive to our employers, where the jobs are. And those will be, we know they're changing. We had a discussion about, you know, the agriculture business. And as far as I understand, agriculture is one of the, maybe the top industry in the state of Tennessee. But how it's defined by statistics maybe makes it look much smaller. But, you know, it's kind of agriculture to me is kind of like IT. It's hard to put your finger on where IT is because it's everywhere. In the state of Tennessee, the industry of agriculture is all different places. It's intermingled with IT and with transportation, which is the third, I think, industry in Tennessee. One of the largest industries in Tennessee is transportation. So it's kind of hard to put your thumb on where agriculture is as an industry in Tennessee. And I think that's one of the other reasons that the data doesn't always match based on how it's collected. But I say all that to say, there's a place for agriculture in our process of awareness, exploration, and connection. We just need to make sure that when they connect, if their pathway is agriculture, then the students understand the skills they need and the opportunities they have in front of them to fully connect into those industries. Whether it's construction, whether it's advanced manufacturing and engineering, or whether it's one of the largest industries in this region and many regions is healthcare. You know, our job as pre-K-12 is to offer, you know, that full awareness and opportunity to connect. And one thing we need, in addition to input from our regional employers and everyone that works with our employers, is we need to also provide our students, when they start in that connection phase of high school, we need them to have authentic experiences in the job. So increasing the number of internships, whether paid or not, whether summer or during the school, or apprenticeships, you know, or just maybe start early with job shadowing, just opportunities to see what happens in a certain job so they can start really, really solidifying their plan when they leave us. So, you know, that's where we all work together. Our role in pre-K-12 is to prepare students to develop their talents, to be aware of what's in front of them, and to put them on a path towards, based on regional information and our employer's needs, towards a certain business and industry. So meetings like this and all of the great partners that regionally we have in Northeast Tennessee, just getting everybody on the same page. I would suggest in addition, we might think about really focusing on a couple of common, high-priority industries, and we go after it together. You know, when we put everything out there, when you put all 16 career clusters out there that in our programming and high school CTE requirements, you know, it gets pretty thin as far as your ability to have a huge impact. So if we focus on a few things and we really, we really work together, I think we can make that needle move in providing students access to, you know, more students access to those high-wage, you know, high-skill and high-demand areas. That makes an impact, of course, to those students and their families, but also on a bigger scale regionally. And we move that, you know, we move a lot of the data that we saw earlier in the direction we think it should go. So partnerships are huge. And I think meetings like this from our elected officials, from the educators, whether it's in pre-K-12 or post-secondary institutions, working to listen intently to our employers and their needs, and then being responsive is something that we all have to work on. We have our limitations. You know, I think as Deming says, "The system is perfectly designed to produce the results it's designed to produce." We have to be, we have to realize that. In our, in high school, we have requirements we have to meet. We can push the limits, and we will, based on the needs of the region. But, you know, we have to work within the system that we have. But as long as we have a clear picture together of the direction we need to go, I think we certainly will get there. So I don't, you know, I was reading, I'm supposed to offer reflections, opportunities, and innovations. I think the innovations are the fact that we need to provide more opportunities for young people, and that's 16 to 24, but specifically in our, you know, in Dr. Barnett, in my world, as far as oversight of a school system, that 16 to 18-year-old, we need to get them into more opportunities to experience on the work sites, to connect with the post-secondary opportunities that are in front of them, the post-secondary institutions. Earn those credentials, because in the national and global conversation, the direction that a lot of this is going through the big employers is do those, do students, have they demonstrated the skill that I need for my company? Once I get them, we're going to continue to train them because we have to adapt. We can't afford to live off of what they learned in a four-year program because our industry changes very rapidly and we've got to adjust. We just want students to have a strong base of both soft skills and then some very specific technical skills. And when we get them, as an employer would say, you know, "We'll take them from there as long as they show up on time, they pass a drug test, they understand that they're part of something bigger than themselves, and they also understand that it's a long-term pathway," meaning they want to grow. So they may start in an entry-level position, but they want to be able to provide people the growth. We need to set students up for success to be in that kind of a system. And that's what we're working hard to do. The partnership certainly ensures that we all can be successful. So rambled too much. Are any questions that I can address? Yes, sir.
Just an honest question on my part. I think a good long-term solution is really, we as a government, need to encourage more entrepreneurship. We need to encourage more locally grown businesses. Because I think back to, you know, the fact that if a business grows up here in Johnson City, they're going to stay headquartered here in Johnson City, and that's where most of the employment for the company is going to be. So I think we as a government need to, need to work with folks, Americans need to think, you know, 20, 30 years down the road about growing our own business.
Yes, sir. Especially with the way things are changing. I mean, some of the things in some industries right now that people do, we know, especially because of COVID, businesses are going to have to adjust and be more automated. So the entrepreneur mindset, we need to foster that. I agree. If I had to choose one thing, that point right there, I think we need to develop our students as they develop that strong plan and they go in that direction to, those skills of entrepreneurship, whether it's in STEM, whether it's in culinary arts, whether it's in construction, the development of that skill will take them much further. So I agree. Yes, sir.
One thing that's listed on your condition to go create, a lot of people start to get their own firm, probably. So you're going to see less and less people going back into what it was turned into, where they're being backed, or they're difficult to add up at the app, or they're starting their own thing and doing their own business.
Nothing will beat you focused on starting your own business and having everything you own.
I heard you brought back the bank.
It will cause you to focus.
I'm worried that if any of the school systems ever just lease a building like boys or us, teach all their arts in something in that facility and what in the center of lots of restaurants.
There are examples where there's the strip malls that are becoming deserts, you know, where there's open space in things like strip malls and other buildings. Yeah, there's examples of district school systems using that space to create, you know, learning centers. Whether it's something that can be changed as the needs are, you know, set up a, I don't know, like a, you know, an example that I've seen is you set up basically a metatronics or advanced manufacturing training center that focuses on, you know, industrial maintenance or all of the programming and troubleshooting that goes along in that industry. And you set it up, but if that need goes away, then that space is repurposed to meet the next need. It's just flexible environment. You're using space like that that's just going to sit there and not really have any use other than being empty. Yes, sir.
One of the advantages of looking at the TCAT potential is there's a lot of kitchens that still there, right? So they have a lot of loans already in the airline who put them on there, who can go down the route, and then they could be a cafe for students of TCAT, the high school students who aren't being enrolled, potentially Riker, whoever's nearby. So that was one advantage. But I love the idea of maybe a flexible and retool the building at the same time.
And I think that's important, especially with our, you know, elected commissions and city councils and elected boards. You're spending public tax dollars. And so when we make an investment in something hard asset like a building, you know, and traditionally, we've locked it in to its structure and its function. But going in a direction where maybe it can be flexible to adapt is probably a good consideration. Yes.
Just kind of going back to what we were describing, so asking about our programs. Do you think it could possibly be a good idea, like over the summer, for this group to get together and maybe tour the facilities? And that way you've got firsthand knowledge of what conditions, good, bad, or in the middle we are, and everybody gets a view of what's going on, you know.
I certainly think that would be worthwhile, but, you know, I mentioned being informed by the employers or business and industry. We don't want to leave them out either in that conversation. I would just recommend that we find a way to engage them as well because their eyes, they see things differently than we might based on the needs that we're trying to meet.
It's okay. I'm going to pull some chairs up front and have speakers sit up here and we'll do like a panel style Q and A. So if you were one of our speakers, come on up. Dr. Barnett, I put you on the spot. Do you have any thoughts or comments that you'd like to make as we're making this transition? And feel free to use the microphone if you're running.
If you want to pay for leasing space, then that'd be great.
We are, I'm looking for, I really am hopeful for this space to be able to be an opportunity for juniors and seniors in all three of our high schools. I don't think it's a good fit for, at this point, for university school. I can't speak to that. But for Science Hill, Daniel Boone and David Crockett, I think it's exciting and be able to have those students their last two years of high school, really working toward an opportunity to have a job, career when they leave, and that opportunity to have really good goals, really good focus on the opportunities they may have at Northeast State, at TCAT in Elizabethan, that they may finish there, or they may go to Walter State, you know, they have aviation there. So I agree with Mr. Boyd, with Jerry, and we really need to include our business partners. You know, one of the things we have out of our Esser money is to improve our Building Trades Building. At Science Hill, it hasn't had any upgrades since 1976. So one of the things we want to do is include construction companies in the area to come in, look at that building, help us with that design and opportunities, and also allow that to lead to apprenticeships. You may think you don't want to do that kind of work. One of the most impressive students I saw last year was a young lady from David Crockett, who was internship with Norwell, and she's a welder, likes it, likes getting up in those small spaces, up in rafters and working with plumbing and HVAC and all kinds of things. She's just really impressive. Who would have ever picked her? Maybe she wouldn't have had the opportunity, and that internship gave her the opportunity to dabble in a career and then decide, "I really like this." And then Norwell really likes her too. So they hired her, hired that student. So I appreciate it. I won't take much more time. Looking forward to working with Jerry and with whatever we can do to get this up and going. Thank you.
This is, it is, wow, it's really like booming. Well, so we just have maybe 20 or however long minutes, we'll say 20, just to hear questions. You can ask questions of each other. You can ask questions of our group here. This is just a free-for-all. And just to continue the conversation. So, what's your?
Jerry, it's just a thought. Is there anything we can learn about training and becoming familiar? I know with my short study in the Air Force, it was amazing to me that you could have 18, 19-year-olds fresh out of high school, and they're working on planes, jets, bombing, for hundreds of millions, billions of dollars. We'll see more details. Is there anything we can learn from the military about training?
I would say this. You said 18, 19-year-olds work on something. Jerry, you just sat there and just said right there to us, you know, we need to find ways to get students to have interest in whatever profession it may be, at a classroom, into a work set, understanding what it's like. Understanding what it's like if it's, you know, a machine or the production process or, you know, work on a construction site. You know, those are the five things that are going to get, you know, interest started in doing certain things. I think if we can find more opportunities and avenues to do that, I think that pipeline continues to get better and better.
Well, now just thinking about, we talked about the career exploration, remember, curriculum, I was, the 911 Center was at our highest requested healthcare sector. There was a student who got to look at how Paul rocks through the system. And went on that line and said, "Now I know what I want to do," because he had a chance to see something. But equally importantly is, sometimes you know what you don't want to do. And that's, if we can provide those experiences earlier, that's cheaper than spend a lot of money in college or going from job to job to job. You can figure out, that's not what makes me tick, what doesn't tick.
One of the things a lot of you said in your presentation was that you can't see it, you can't, I think, dream it or something like that.
You can't be what you can't see.
Can't be what you can't see. Thinking about each one of your speeches, each one of your talks. And one thing came to mind is that perhaps we need to start having a dream class to graduate. A dream class. What do you dream you want to be? You know? And then let that part of that dream class be a shadowing experience. They have to shadow professions before they graduate from high school so that they can really have what they want to be, just to talk.
Yes, I'll come back.
Sorry, sorry. I'm not going to hog the mic, but it's interesting. He said, "I've got a six-year-old," assuming he's a six-year-old. There's certain things he says he wants to be. An angel is one which I don't have. You know, sometimes a sports player, whether it's soccer, baseball, football, right now it doesn't matter, as long as it's not sports ball. But the other is a race car driver. Well, the reason why he wants to be a race car driver was because his grandfather used to race cars in that muscle shop, and anytime he's with his grandfather, he is working on a car. You know, those are things that, you know, that might be his rear backup line. And it started getting in there as a five-year-old, working with his grandfather in a car. It's something that he takes interest in. And I go back to the mentorries, but, you know, I'm very fortunate. My son's got a lot of mentors. A lot of people give my best time and energy to them. I think if you do that, educators, it takes special people to do that because there has to be so much more than what they get paid for. But those are opportunities right there that I agree with. You know, it's interesting to see my child, because I see it every day, and I'm learning as a dad. But, you know, those are opportunities I think would be great to let them explore what it is that they might want to do, given that opportunity.
One of the things that we're doing in Washington County, I mentioned in the PowerPoint, was to increase our career awareness and exploration. We have purchased, well, last year we received a grant, started in our middle school. And students who participate, they do a, what they call a FIT test. Personality, aptitude. There are some things that we're just naturally good at and some things that we can acquire skill. So in this platform, after students receive their FIT score, it links them, it's very scientific, it links them to careers. scientific, it links them to careers. So the students can look at these different careers, educational requirements, there are live videos of what they're gonna be. In addition to that, remember that those of us who teach the class, we came from industry. So when I was in the classroom, I knew what healthcare was, so I was able to share personal experiences with our students, the good, the bad, and the ugly. We had guest speakers that came in, we did field trips to industry. So we do, we do a good job, I feel like in Washington County and the high school, but I agree, it needs to start, you know, younger, and that's what we're looking into, our, increase our career awareness in kindergarten even. And it's, but yeah, you're actually right, we're doing a good job, but we do need to increase that.
Crystal, I'm gonna go with Snitcher. So a couple of things working across the region, there's some school system, nothing, you said you maybe just started doing this, that make sure that younger kids get a chance to visit the career technical program, that's part of maybe even a six-week thing for one school system. But one year I decided for all the students who participated in the EDE summit, we do a gallery walk, so we tell the school system, you can come promote your career tech programs, because chances are business doesn't know you offer welding, or they don't know, you know, the different things you're offering. So I decided to go in with the high school students at all the high schools that participated, just to get their input. And one of the things they said consistently was they felt that every student in high school should be required to take at least one career technical course, because the teachers come from business and industry, and they understand the real world, and I don't mean that my daughter, who's an educator, doesn't, but she, you know, she went from school to school to school to school, so she may not be thinking about welding, or she may not be thinking about engineering or whatever, but those students, that they felt like that made them a stronger student, even if they were not concentrators.
You know, starting early is a key to this today, today on my job side, I'm starting a couple of houses, and I looked around, and there was four young boys working. So I went around and talked with them, and they was all in between nineteen and twenty-four years old, every one of them. Two of them owned their own equipment, okay, I mean, they're self-employed, they was working hard, and two of them owned equipment, and they was actually putting the rebar, putting the steel in the footers and everything, and I got to talking with them, you know, and every single one of those boys started working in this industry when they was twelve to fourteen years old. So look where they're at in this, I mean, they're, they're working, they're charging, making good money coming out there and working, trust me. So it is so important that we start early, you know. We passed legislation this year that requires that along about the same time as the students in the seventh grade takes an aptitude test, that they will, the LEAs have to advise those students a CTE and vocational program, vocational program act. I think that's extremely important moving forward. That's part of the problem that we have gotten away from for the last twenty years, is actually starting these kids earlier, because it's, it's proven, research has proved, that if you get a kid interested in something, then they will want to learn about that, and they will even go as high, as going for higher education in what they're interested in. You get their talent with their interest, along with their grades, and it just proves it. And the state, let me tell you where the state, you know, I had a very long conversation with Steve Plail, I think, and Jay Klein from the Department of Education. I had a very long, right before I left, I wanted to set a meeting with them, and they described it as a pendulum swing. And they say that that pendulum is sort of down at the bottom right now, but it is very much on his way up for CTE and vocational, and that's good to hear, because whether, what we do, you know, is one thing, but a lot of it has to go through the Department of Education's way. So it was good to hear those folks talk about that they thought that the pendulum was swinging up. I think that's very important. I think the time is right to do something in this area, right now, I think the time is right. I think the state is leaning that way, I think the next six years you're gonna see a big change in CTE vocational programming for the state, and our time is a time to change right now, and I look forward to that, because we're leaving way too many, in, for, out of one hundred low-income students, out of one hundred in Tennessee, eighty-nine graduate from high school, thirty-eight go to college, twenty-six return to college their second year, and eleven graduate. That's a startling number. We've got to do all we can for all that percentage of kids out of that hundred to get them a career so they can make a living.
I have a question. It seems like we need a short game and a long game, so like, some sort of long-term plan, looking at figures to 2029 and kind of thinking about what industries are coming, but also we need to be like pretty nimble, and I hear, like, heard Crystal say, we stay in touch with industry, and I know, you know, Mitch is regularly in touch. What's our process for knowing, like, having our finger on the pulse of what is needed, so that if we do have an opportunity to do TCAT in the next year or two, or if we do have an opportunity to spend money on, you know, your welding program, or improve some facility, some sort of short-term, like, a couple of year, quick nimble changes, what's our process for keeping up to speed on what needs to happen, like, the short game? How do we do it?
Well, I don't know where the microphone is, but I'm pretty, I'm gonna be now. So as mentioned before, I'm almost daily looking at our labor market data, and we have an advantage in career technical, and I hate to keep coming back to this, but remember, we came from industry, the instructors, so we still have contacts. A lot of us still work in the summer, our teachers, our career tech teachers, they make extra income in the summer when they're off, so that keeps their skills for one, but they're also keeping in contact with their business and industry partners. So it's constant, and of course, Laudy, I work with her weekly, I guess we talk most of the time, but that's really short-term. Like I said, we have an advantage in career tech because of our past and what we do, and then it's constantly looking at those labor market data, what do we need, you know, reaching out to the different resources. I would be, I would never say that we could do this on our own, that would be as selfish thing for me, it's our community, it's teamwork, that's what we do short-term.
You know, and one of the advantages, and I keep going back to the potential for the TCAT, right now our students, the service area for TCAT is the five northern counties, so students will have to drive to Stony Creek if they get certain certifications, and there's certain things that aren't offered, so just the idea of having something that's more central, that whatever the workforce need is, is to be able to bring those kind of programs there, particularly looking if there's nothing being offered anywhere, or if you're looking at particularly advantage in Washington County and Johnson City students, then what does industry need that we can get them in that building, because it's gonna be closer than trying to get them out to Stony Creek. I do caution that you don't do duplicative programs, because if you do too much of that, then all of a sudden you've got people who can't get jobs, and then, as I mentioned, the placement numbers become a problem and those kinds of things, but.
Is that your question?
No.
Long, huh?
She's doing a great job.
And I would say this, Jerry, I think it starts with things like, you know, I was communication, but if we as a group, and it's ours, but probably more work on Jerry and Steve, but can't go with some type of strategic plan, vision, whatever it may be, and actually have key metrics that we want to look at, saying we want to improve those numbers right there. And I could spit off the health of our workforce, the education payments I talked about, giving every child an opportunity to have CTE course or attain certification, really looking at, you know, those types of metrics, looking at median income, making sure that we want to see that number grow every year. You know, if those are our metrics and we want to see those goals improved, then we can come up with a short-term success, those are gonna help Jerry and Steve get certain programs in place that can probably win next year. But the long-term vision too, if it's a TCAT, or if it's, you know what, we want to focus on this one regional initiative, that, you know, we all have one program across the region that we're all focused on together and we'll collaborate, it's gotta go from this from tonight. And I could ram on and on and on about it, but it's supporting stuff like Laudy's, like a career quest. That along with students, the opportunity to understand, well, I didn't know about this field, you know, that I could go do this, or I can make this type of money actually working as an electrician, you know, they know what they know, and they don't know what they don't know.
Jerry, one of the problems in the dynamics of my family is getting the college educated that family, they just understand their decisions don't necessarily have to have that four-year degree. There has been such resistance, a son of my grandchildren that don't care a thing about, but making almost six figures, stalling dogs. And, you know, but you gotta get the mindset away from the four-year college, it's the only way to support your dad. Maybe you all see it that way, but I believe it.
I think my question is for Laudy, that she'd already kind of covered that. Based on an article in a paper about two, three weeks ago, forty-one students were invited to the TCAT in Elizabethan for next year. Thirty-five were from Carter County slash Elizabethan schools, five from Johnson County schools, and one was from Daniel Boone. So, and we understand we don't get the priority, but I would like to see Washington County and Johnson City get some type of, I mean, I guess it's based on proximity, if it's at Boons Creek, you know, I know there's no guarantees.
Yes, I'm, I don't know when you're saying forty-one were invited, I'm not sure what that.
Well, there's how many students are asked to come to, invited to the TCAT for next year in.
Oh, particular programs?
Elizabeth.
Yeah.
I mean, you can see they're all, like you said, in that one area.
Yeah, I think again, part of that is proximity. The other thing is, a lot of the programs and why this, our TCAT at Elizabethan will get, potentially get some funding, is their waitlist is really long. So this is sad to say, but we've told kids that are juniors, you need to get yourself on the welding waitlist now, because it's about a two-year waitlist. Now, I still think we should be offering more programs and that, you know, if I were Magic, why not say we open up more welding and welding at Boons Creek, right? But I think some of it too is, is a child that lives down, you know, near Crockett gonna drive to Stony Creek? Probably not. So it's again, the whole proximity needs.
Thing.
Yeah. And in an ideal situation, if they had the dual enrollment, then they're already getting those hours while they're in high school, and as Crystal described, whether it's TCAT or Northeast State or whatever, the chance to have certification, or maybe even close to the associate's degree by the time they walk across the stage. And then the important piece too, is for those who do want to go on for that four-year, that we make sure that pathways are put in place that it's two by two, that you're not having to go two years to get a degree, and then come to ETSU to get three more years. And we've got to make sure that we're building those pathways so that there are agreements between, we have the program set up, so at the end of the day, it's still four years. Where you started your two may not matter, right?
Yeah. Let me just take one quick. I'm not gonna be as good as, as like, but one of the things, several things you said, one of the things that you mentioned was that quite often, children in kindergarten and high school, all through pre-K through twelve, they're told you really need to go to college. Now, if you have looked at, and I don't want to go wonky on you, but if you've looked at some of the European programs, they actually have, do a tracks, where, for example, in Germany, there's a point in the child's life as he's going through secondary school, where they say, do you want to go to university, or do you want to have a career, a job? And if they say, I'd rather have a job, they go do a track, so that by the time they're sixteen, they exit the classroom and go into internships or apprentice programs for three years. At the end of that period, they have a job. It's really a smart way of conserving our resources, because rather than having eleven students out of a hundred graduate from college, and spending all the resources on kids who really don't want to be there, maybe we could start to focus them a little better. You guys are doing. The other thing was, you also have to remember that we talk about training, training our children and getting them where they can have jobs. Well, they're gonna go where the jobs are. The other part of the equation is, how are we gonna create jobs here? How are we gonna, what can we do to develop the economy, to attract new employers that will hire the kids that we're getting out of here? We see our graduates exit en masse. Where do they go? They go where the jobs are. And I know for a fact, and folks in agriculture and folks in construction, I'm sure can say this, try and get somebody to do some wallwork for you at your house. Construction kids, they're not here. And the ones that are, stay busy all the time. It's not a solution anything, but in terms of long-term planning, one of the questions that you've got to ask yourself about your community is, where do you want to be? Where do you want the community to be in terms of type of community you have, the type of jobs you get?
It's kind of like getting which comes first, you know, chicken or egg. You can't recruit companies that come here unless we have workforce ready, correct me if I'm wrong on this pitch. It's hard, what you're doing right now, trying to recruit the company, the two hundred jobs, and I asked you, where are we gonna get the employees, and you said, I don't know.
Well, and it's hard when you have employers that are, that are here, that, you know, wanna make sure that they can fill their needs.
They'll go jobs too. It's such a.
People, people, I'm telling you, people are the new currency, and John's right on the construction side.
Right.
I've had two projects this summer on this summer that I've had to watch YouTube and figure out, because I can't give anybody my ass.
So tomorrow I'll be sending to all the CTE directors, opportunities for, for those who don't have a plan after high school, they can go work at A O Smith at seventeen, forty-two an hour, starting, so we're gonna be sending that out tomorrow, with the whole heading of, don't know what your plan is after high school, because there're gonna be students who really don't know what they're gonna do the day after graduation, and maybe that will pique somebody's interest. So sometimes it's just getting the message out at the right time, through the right channels, and we'll see what happens.
I probably have time for a couple more questions. While we're asking the last couple of questions, just remember to slip over your agenda and give me some feedback on, you know, what you see as another conversation you think we ought to have, this was just a kind of starting place, informationally, so I'm very curious to know if we would want to again, and if so, what would they want to hear about?
Yeah, I was, you know, I just wonder how, how we can communicate this with the kids, you know, I just wonder if we could pick out two or three job deals that we know right now that we have jobs for. You know, we pick out from, I guess, our three different high schools, and maybe a few from grade school, and we just really sit down and communicate with those kids. I mean, I've got like, grab the bull with the horn, you know, and do something with it, so, you know, communicate with the, with the kids and try to, try to really, you know, get feedback from them. I mean, I think that's where we need the feedback from, is from the kids. We'd sit here, think about this, talk about this till cows come home, but really, we need to see what kind of interest we get from the kids, because we got to figure out, we got to figure out where we are for, for an area that we're in. To answer your question about Johnson County, Carter County, I'm a member of the Home Builder Association, we just had to buy it there. Johnson County and Carter County has won that sucker every year, hands down. It's because those kids live in a place where they start over. It's exactly why. It's proven, okay? Whenever they come to school, they know how to work. Kids that are, don't work. I'm just telling you. That's the difference right there.
And it's because the farms is not where the farms used to be, and kids won't work on farm like they was bred.
That's our fault, though.
That's right.
That's our fault. It's not, it's not the kids' fault, so we've got to do everything that we can to turn that situation around, but, but I've just noticed that about Johnson and Carter County. I mean, man, they come out. I mean, man, they come at it every year. I mean, they're fired up, you can tell that they want to work and they want to win. And they do.
Johnson County.
How many 16-year-olds you got working on the job a few years?
My electrician hires high schoolers to help him. He's about the only person that does. I had a couple on the, I had a couple on the job today, but not much older than 16, I guarantee. I'd say they quit high school, to be honest with you. You know, but, but, uh, you know, that's just an observation. We, I think we need to communicate with these kids and see where they're at. I, I think that's a, that's a big goal we've got to do.
Again, Phil, walk down the room, give credit still. Giving them an opportunity to go do is a lot better than just expect them to do it. You know, and again, go back to, you know, if there's metrics that we want to improve, make the third goal is to improve them. Let's start today and let's figure out a true plan that's going to get us there. Nothing prohibits us from sitting down, you know, on a quarterly basis to talk about strategy. Commission needs every month or education needs every month. You know, if there's key things that you want to see happen and there's partners like Lauda, myself, whoever, uh, I can tell you, we could probably find money, Lauda's got a thing good at it. We could probably find money not only from a grant standpoint, but also too really working with our employers here. They are investing a ton of money right now, just trying to put ads out there to get people to come work. And, and there's a lot of factors there because of COVID that's, you know, stopping that habit, but they will find money to invest into a pipeline because they want to see that.
Well, to me, this is just my thinking, kids are lazy. Look at the, look at the signs between here and Johnson City of health and water, okay? Folks, that's, that's a problem. They, that's, that's ridiculous. It starts at home.
And I'm not, not a good term to say it starts from home. I don't want to say every kid's lazy because I don't know every situation, but they need mentors.
And it, and they're going to get the mentors from us, from the school systems.
And, and that's.
From a job.
Yeah, and that's where I would look at it and say if there's encouragement coming from someone who says, you're really talented at this, you know, there's an opportunity to go here and work at A O Smith and you can get credit for it.
That's right.
And you know, that might get paid. That's where they'll start to say that, hey, I am that, I do have this, I am good. You know, those are opportunities I think we can create and Jerry's about all, man. Seeing too many, I've seen too many situations where, you know, basically kids fall through cracks and, you know, they're probably lined up in a detention center instead of working, you know, where they could be, productive members side. We've got to create opportunity.
We are at time, so I wanted to thank everybody for being here. If you have that survey filled out, please bring it to this table, put it on this table. Thank you to all of our speakers tonight, we really appreciate you. Dr. Clow.
Thank you, Peter Jones for all your hard work.